...notice, the Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with whereas advanced notice of this meeting has been placed in the Philadelphia Inquirer and Courier-Post at least forty-eight hours in advance and was also posted at the Central Office Bulletin Board and bulletin boards at the schools. Um, please shoot a flag.
Flag.
From the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, invincible, and liberty and justice.
Alright, so right now, um, this is the reorg meeting, so we will have the swearing in of, uh, the three reappointed board members, one by one. So, first board member to be sworn in is Taysha Manir, so please stand out, face the audience. Um, raise your right hand and in a loud voice say your full name. And please repeat after me.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. I affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter and I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or any offense listed in NJHS eighteen A colon twelve dash one. I affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of, member of, a Board of Education and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. The next board member to be sworn in is Minister Wasim Muhammad. So, in a loud voice, please, uh, state your full name to the audience.
Wasim Muhammad.
Uh, please repeat after me. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. I affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter and I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or any offense listed in NJHS eighteen A colon twelve dash one. I affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of, member of, a Board of Education and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. So, last board member to be sworn in is Martha Wilson. Please raise your right hand and in a loud voice, please state your full name.
Martha Wilson.
Please repeat after me. I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people. I affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter and I am not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or any offense listed in NJHS eighteen A colon twelve dash one. I affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of, member of, a Board of Education and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. So, the new board members can, uh, have a seat. And just to add to the, the Open Public Meetings Act notice, um, the notice was in the Courier-Post and the Aldea on June twentieth and twenty-first for this meeting. I forgot to mention that earlier. So, next is roll call. Alright, so we do roll call for this meeting. Teresa Atwood.
Present.
Catherine Blackshear.
Here.
Jose Brito Bueno.
Here.
Dorothy Burley.
Present.
Joshua Cole.
Present.
Taysha Manir.
Present.
Wasim Muhammad.
Present.
Felicia Reyes Morton.
Martha Wilson.
Present.
Alright, we have a quorum. And so, now we're going to, um, have a motion to nominate the board vice president. Uh, the way we do that is, I'm gonna ask for, uh, thank you, board president, I'm gonna ask for a motion to open nominations and then, once we have nominations, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close nominations and then, we're gonna have a motion to appoint the president. Yes.
One minute, Brian. What do we do when the vice president nominee?
That's okay, so, um, we're gonna hold off on the vice president nomination for now, we can do that later in the meeting. Um, but, um, it is appropriate to go forward with the president nomination now. So, first, can I get a motion to open nominations to elect the president of the Advisory Board of Education?
Motion to open nominations.
Alright, so, motion made by Teresa Atwood, can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, so, all in favor of opening nominations to appoint the president, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Alright, so, right now, we have open nominations for board president, so, if, um, anybody would like to nominate, just say the name out loud, who you'd like to nominate for president.
Martha Wilson.
Alright, so, we have, uh, one nomination for Martha Wilson, made by Teresa Atwood. Any other nominations for board president?
Martha Wilson.
Nominations to be closed.
Alright, so, same nomination for Martha Wilson. I have a motion to close nominations by Dorothy Burley, can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, so, motion to close nomination made by Dorothy Burley, seconded by Taysha Manir, all in favor of closing nominations, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Alright, so, the only person nominated for board president is Martha Wilson, so now, can I get a motion to appoint Martha Wilson as board president?
Motion to appoint.
Alright, motion to appoint made by Wasim Muhammad, um, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dorothy Burley. So, I'll do roll call, um, and this is motion to appoint, uh, Martha Wilson as board president. Um, Jose Brito Bueno.
Yes.
Dorothy Burley.
Yes.
Teresa Atwood.
Yes.
Catherine Blackshear.
Yes.
Joshua Cole.
Yes.
Taysha Manir.
Yes.
Wasim Muhammad.
Yes.
And Martha Wilson.
Yes.
Alright, so, we have a unanimous vote to, um, appoint Martha Wilson as president. Congratulations, Martha Wilson is president for the twenty-seven eighteen Advisory Board of Education.
Thank you.
So, I guess we can go forward with the vice president nomination, same, um, procedure, so, can I get a motion to open nominations to appoint the board vice president?
Motion to, um, open up the, um, voting vice president.
Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, so, motion to appoint board vice president made by Catherine Blackshear, seconded by Jose Brito Bueno, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Alright, so, now, please, um, whoever would like to nominate, please let us know the names for the vice president.
I would like to nominate Felicia Reyes Morton as vice president.
So, Felicia Reyes Morton nominated by Catherine Blackshear, any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Felicia Reyes Morton.
Alright, so, we have two for Felicia Reyes Morton.
I move the nominations to be closed.
Alright, so, motion to close the nominations made by Dorothy Burley, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Catherine Blackshear, all in favor of closing nominations for board vice president, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Alright, so, right now, we only have one nomination for Felicia Reyes Morton to be board vice president, can I get a motion to appoint Felicia Reyes Morton as vice president?
Motion to appoint Felicia Reyes Morton.
Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
So, motion to appoint Felicia Reyes Morton as vice president made by Taysha Manir and seconded by Catherine Blackshear, roll call, Jose Brito Bueno.
Yes.
Dorothy Burley.
Yes.
Teresa Atwood.
Yes.
Catherine Blackshear.
Yes.
Joshua Cole.
Yes.
Taysha Manir.
Yes.
Wasim Muhammad.
Yes.
Felicia Reyes Morton.
Yes.
Catherine Blackshear. I mean, I'm sorry, Martha Wilson.
Yes.
So, we have a unanimous, uh, vote, uh, congratulations, Felicia Reyes Morton is the board vice president for twenty-seven twenty, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So, at this point, um, we have a board president and a vice president, so, um, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to, um, board president Martha Wilson to take, uh, comments.
Would either of our elected, newly elected board members like to have comments? Ms. Manir?
Minister Wasim Muhammad.
Uh, thank you, Madam President, and congratulations, Madam President, congratulations, Madam Vice President.
Thank you.
And I wanna congratulate, um, Ms. Taysha Manir. And I want to thank, uh, the outgoing and dynamic mayor, Mayor Dana Redd, for reappointing me, for suggesting that I be reappointed, uh, to the Advisory Board of Education and I want to, um, just, you know, be thankful to each and everyone here who have, uh, have the opportunity to work with you all for the past three years, have been a great learning experience and, um, um, you know, just, uh, learning a lot of things and I just wanted to say to the community that as I was just talking to Mr. Joshua Cole and I'll wait for him to, to acknowledge certain things, but I just wanted to say that, to me, serving on that Advisory Board of Education is, uh, beneficial to me and some people may shy away from this, as you know, I like to run to very pressing issues because of the fact that, you know, it allows us, or allow me, to really get involved with the program curriculum and everything that just deals with education. As I always say and I stand on that every month that I stand here, of course, we are very peculiar about things when things are not going, um, in our community that it goes on in other communities about having an elected board and I don't think anyone up here who, uh, well, at least, I can speak for myself, is against what we would call an elected board, but we do know in our community, sometimes we don't like to, uh, acknowledge certain things in our community, we have, uh, pressing issues in our community and I think when you have a pressing issue as we have when it comes to education and different social problems and, of course, racism and sexism and all the isms that comes in our community, uh, that we have to look at, we have to sometimes take, uh, uh, different measures than what's the norm and when our community, when we do the pressing work in our community and bring our community up to the norm, then I think we can get back to the norm because we can't escape what has happened to us since we've been here in America for the past four hundred years, uh, we, like no other people, I'm talking particularly black people here in America, have suffered so many ills and so much trauma for four hundred years of, uh, of oppression that as we beginning to discuss trauma today in our community and discuss trauma and, and talk about the effects that trauma have on people, we have to know and understand that we have to look at things from a different dynamic than what people look for through in the community. So, I just wanna say, please continue to engage us, please continue to engage me, uh, in the community when it comes to education, I try to make what I preach and teach and show, I try to show up and lead by example and that, that's what gets me in the room. While, a lot of people are saying, why is Brother Minister Wasim Muhammad in the room? Because I try to get there by being an example and being that which I preach and getting involved with education and showing that if I have an ideology or philosophy about education, I can prove it through data, through what I, what you see, what's working with students that we are bearing here in the city of Camden and the outreach work we do with students and all students in the community. So, some people may say, why am I concerned, since you have a private school, why are you concerned with the children in our community? Because the children in our community represents us and I am in, uh, in the community and I'm always concerned, not with these children at the University of Islam, I'm concerned with all of our children in our community and abroad, even in the suburban, uh, neighborhood of what they're learning that can educate them and help make, um, this country what it supposed to be. Thank you and I appreciate, I look forward to continue serving.
Thank you, Minister Wasim. Ms. Manir.
Thank you. Um, I would like to thank the mayor for her reappointing me and being, staying here and being part of this team, um, being part of the, of the Board of Education and supporting Paimon Rahanafer. Um, I would also like to, um, let the public know that I am grateful for this opportunity and it's been a wonderful, um, it's been, it's been very learning for me and I will always try to make the right decision, I will always try to push forward, um, the best for our kids here in the city of Camden, I'm gonna always try to push for, you know, new ideas, um, to support the, to support the children in Camden, I am a product from Camden, so, it's an honor for me to sit on this Board of Education and I'm always gonna look forward in pushing Camden forward and education, especially education, um, by being, by being part of this whole educational system here in the city of Camden and being also a student at Rowan University and obtaining higher education, obtaining my master's in education, so, it is a priority for me to be part of this movement and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manir. Reyes Morton?
Um, good evening, everybody, um, I, good evening, um, I'm grateful that you guys have been reappointed, um, this is a great team, you guys all do phenomenal work, um, on the stage and off the stage, um, and you're not shy about showing your work, um, and so, you know, I'm, you know, very grateful for that, um, you know, grateful for being reappointed, um, thanks to Mayor Dana Redd, nothing gives me greater satisfaction than, um, bringing the community to the administration and, um, vice versa, um, and I, you know, try my best to stay consistent with that message and with that practice and so, you know, as always, um, you know, getting over here, um, you know, thinking, um, if there's anybody out there who wishes to lead by example and also get involved, we are just one, one phone call away, um, don't hesitate in contacting us, we're always available, um, things are done better when we work together and communicate, um, and so, you have a great team up here that advocates on behalf of our communities and our children on a daily basis, again, on and off the stage and so, um, you know, it's, it is always encouraged for, um, you guys to reach out, uh, to your school board leaders, um, if need be, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. At this time, I wanna yield the floor over to one of our board members who will be leaving us at the end of this month. Mr. Joshua Cole came in with high expectations to work with this Board of Education on moving this system forward for our children. Mr. Cole is in a high esteemed position that he works in and because of his employment, there has to be some changes, so, he will not be able to continue to live in the city of Camden, so therefore, he's leaving the board at the end of this month. So, Mr. Cole, it has been a pleasure to have you here and serving with you on the committees that we've had in place for the Camden City Board of Education and you have brought nothing but excellence, uh, in all of your comments, your thoughts and those things that you have moved forward on behalf of our children in this community. It was a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Remax.
Thank you, President Wilson and to Superintendent Paimon, I, um, it was a pleasure to, to serve on this advisory board. I came here again, again with high expectations and, um, and I know when you come to some, enter into something new, a new venture, um, you can expect changes to happen right away, um, so, I accept that, um, but I do believe that, um, there are some good changes that are going on within the school, city, the, the city as a whole, um, we might not agree on everything, um, and that's the way, that's who we are, that's our nature, we're not gonna see eye to eye on everything, but we must come to some type of consensus where, um, in order to move things forward, certain things have to be done, um, and I just hope that this board will continue to move things, um, continue to move things forward, um, and so, that our, the children in the city of Camden could actually benefit from it and lay in the size our differences, this, to, to see things through that will work towards their benefit, um, so, again, I thank you for these past two years, I have learned a lot, um, it's totally different from working in the field of, um, science, um, I can say, just to say the least, um, and I definitely, um, appreciate the members of the community coming out each month, expressing their concerns and challenging this board to do better, um, I can appreciate that, it's been rough, but I can appreciate that and I, I hope that you will continue to press this board to do better, um, because there is a lot of work to be done. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Again, on behalf of the mayor of the Camden City, I would like to thank Mayor Dana Redd for her faith in us continuing to work together to bring things, to elevate things within this Board of Education. As the city claims Camden rising, we must do the same thing on behalf of our children. We have children in this school district who are beautiful minds, they will absorb because their brains are sponges and when you give them what they need to be able to grow and to be able to go out and compete in this world, that's what our job is, to make sure that we give them what they need and so, with that, there's a challenge to each and every one of us who is sitting here, there's a charge from you who are in the community, the public, to come to us with your concerns, your issues, your ideas, no one person can think of everything, but as a team, working as a community in this society, doesn't matter about our socioeconomic process, what they want to try to say, we're poverty, we're not poverty, you're only poverty if you think poverty, you're only, you're blessed when you believe in that. So, what we have to do is begin to speak positive to our children, speak positive to the things that are before us and us working together as a team to make that happen and with that, I believe that we can do what we have to do with Superintendent Rahanafer and the rest of this board at this table, because the one thing you have is you have people from every walk of life sitting at this table and each and every one of us are involved in your children's lives and we've been a part of your lives, so, we care about you, we care about your children, but most importantly, it's our responsibility to make sure that we put policies in place, make sure that we have the equipment and the things that are necessary for your children to grow. So, with that, I wanna say thank you once again for your confidence and a vote for me this evening, thank you. I will now turn the meeting over to our interim business administrator, Ms. Karen Willis.
Yeah, so, now, a, a, as we do every reorg meeting, um, we will read the Code of Ethics for board members and I'm gonna ask for a motion to adopt the Code of Ethics, so, the Code of Ethics for board members is found in NJHS eighteen A colon twelve dash twenty-four point one, it's applicable to every New Jersey board member in the state, um, so, here, here's the reading of it, "A school board member shall abide by the following Code of Ethics for school board members. A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex or social standing. C, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning and appraisal and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. D, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. E, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private actions that may compromise the board. F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. I, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. Finally, J, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and I will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution." So, um, at this time, now that we've read the Code of Ethics, can I get a motion to accept the Code of Ethics?
Motion to accept.
Um, second?
Second.
A motion to accept Code of Ethics made by Teresa Atwood, seconded by Dorothy Burley, roll call, Jose Brito Bueno.
Yes.
Dorothy Burley.
Yes.
Teresa Atwood.
Yes.
Catherine Blackshear.
Yes.
Joshua Cole.
Yes.
Taysha Manir.
Yes.
Wasim Muhammad.
Yes.
Felicia Reyes Morton.
Yes.
Martha Wilson.
Yes.
So, we have a unanimous vote to accept the, um, Code of Ethics for board members after this meeting, I'm gonna ask each board member to sign and date, uh, the Code of Ethics and we will store that in the board box, thank you.
Thank you. Meeting is now turned over to Superintendent Rahanafer.
Okay, I'm gonna come down to do the regular presentation, our board members and students will join us in the front row. Okay, as that's, good evening, everybody, as the presentation is being loaded, we are going to begin tonight's superintendent's presentation with two guest presenters as we often do and so, the first will be, uh, the folks from the Chowhound Group at Brim Medical Arts, uh, and so, that after-school program is led by Ms. Borelli Luke, Ms. Luke Borelli, uh, and a number of our students at Brim Medical Arts are active participants, they recently came back from, I think some of y'all know this and we've shared their accomplishments before, they recently came back from a pretty extraordinary trip down to Georgia to rescue animals there and so, we wanted to have them share out, uh, the work that they are doing at Chowhound, so, as they're coming down and the presentation is being loaded, uh, please acknowledge them and give them a round of applause.
sickness and Ms. Luke had to call a nurse. So, but regardless of social status, grade level, or beliefs, we came together to stay focused. We was on a mission to bring up over 500 dogs and a small ratio of cats as well, back to New Jersey for adoption and a new life. Down in Georgia, where guns are legal and pet owners have hundreds of free acres, animals are abused and abandoned and killed, left in boxes with "shoot me" signs, cigarette burns, and even ears taken off. This is some of the horrible sights my team and I encountered as we insisted in organizing, packing, and being introduced to all of the animals on the farm. My team's goal was to help out until there was nothing left to help with. Furthermore, with all of the helping came more results. We met people from all over, Colorado, Seattle, Washington, and Texas, all to meet for one goal, to be part of this mission. With all of that came the funniest part. There wasn't a time that Ms. Luke would be looking for me, because I'd be talking to someone about Chow. The people there loved our shirts, loved the way we acted, loved the way that we were involved. People asked for our social media pages and to buy our shirts. After the message got through that we were from Camden and that our ride was 16 hours just to come and help, some people felt heart-touched, and they wanted to support us. In addition, we also got interviewed by Lorenzo Borjos, who is a millionaire who starred in The Bachelor, and we got interviewed on a Facebook Live page called The Dodo, which had over half a million or somewhat near half a million views. On our ride back to New Jersey, our route to New Jersey, we seen people waiting and shelters waiting for the caravan to arrive. It was such an emotional and heroic moment to be part of, I will never forget. I just want to say thank you to the Camden Board of Education for allowing us to be part of such an important event, as it brought so many new opportunities and experiences, networking, and the expansion of BRIM's very own Chowhouse house. Thank you. Now, I want to introduce Mr. Abram.
Thank you, Cameron. And I just want to, we kind of sprung that on Cameron in the last minute, and I think he did a really great job with talking in front of a group of people, so thank you, Cameron. But anybody that knows Cameron knows that that's absolutely his personality, and for the entire trip, everybody was blown away by his charisma, as well as the charisma of every one of the students that came with us. Do we have, we have some pictures to show you, and then eventually a short video that'll be made available later. And if not, that's more than okay, because the biggest thing that happened for us is that we were able to help those that are less fortunate than us. When we got down to Georgia, roughly 800 miles away, our students were culture shocked. So much open space, so warm, yet, and the food, yet so much tragedy with how animals are treated cruelly down there because of the lack of humane education and the lack of animal cruelty laws. And so, by helping spread the mission of animal aid and the mission of Chowhound, it's very important to us, and we greatly appreciate everybody from the Board of Education, as well as from Central Office, that made that possible. And so, with that, again, I'd like to thank everybody, and we'll get back with you guys on the pictures and everything like that. So, thank you.
So, if the pictures get uploaded a little bit later during my presentation, we'll scroll through them and invite you all back up. Thank you all so much for all your efforts and the trip down to Georgia. Actually, you know what? We can go ahead and jump to the second part of this presentation. So, we wanted to give you an update on the Camden High reconstruction process, and chiefly the temporary space plan, which we have alluded to the past couple of board meetings as being near final. And so, we are now in a position to be able to share out that finalized temporary space plan, and I would like to welcome up one of the key leaders of the Camden High Planning Committee, Mr. Rashawn Hornsby, to give us an update.
Just want to give you a quick update, well, for everybody, Rashawn Hornsby. I sit on the Historical and Culture Committee over at Camden High. Right now, the temporary space right now that we're going to use, that they came up with, is Hatch. All the children from Camden High will be housed in Hatch. All the children that currently attend, well, I say I'm saying Hatch, because I went to Hatch. It's actually Big Picture Learning Academy now, still Hatch to me, but Big Picture Learning Academy. Those students will be transferred over to Cats Academy. All, that's ninth through 12th grade, and sixth through eighth grade students actually go to the Annex Building. They won't be in the main building. The three floors in the main building will house the ninth through 12th grade students over at Camden High. They keep those guys in Parkside, right down the street. I think that's a great thing as well, to keep them in Parkside. It's not really too far. So, I think that was the best space. Instead of shifting them all over the city, I think it's better to keep them right there. It's right down the street. It's not going to really change too many things with transportation and all that kind of stuff. So, logistics, I think it pretty much works. The students that are currently in Cats are going to be transferred to a school in East Camden, I believe. Those students at Cats already signed off on that, so that's done. As well as the Historical Society, well, Committee, rather, we're working on right now. Last meeting we had, there was a proposed budget of about $600,000 to save the four pillars on the top of the castle. The Historical Society actually proposed a plan to do a new park to take out the two tennis courts that are currently right next to the Historical Society and put those pillars there. It'd be, I mean, it looks pretty nice. I wish I had a drawling or something, but if it goes through, they already have some funding, they waited on additional funding to see if it actually goes through. But right now, that's what our committee is actually working on. John Royal, which heads up, another committee is actually working on the end-of-the-year celebrations. And Ms. Avis is working on the sports. They're currently working with Rutgers to have things the kids actually play over at Rutgers for all the sporting events. So, that's pretty much set in stone. So, those are pretty much the updates right now on the committees, as well as the things I talked about. That budget was about $600,000. I was told that that money will come out of the $133 million that's proposed to build the school. So, they were working it out to see kind of what things wanted to be saved and what we could. I proposed to save everything if we could, but if we were to, you know, not save something, I proposed maybe to use those funds to do something else for the students. So, it's up in the air right now, but I think it's a, you know, it's a great opportunity to save something if the school has to come down. Right now, they're talking about the marble steps, the four pillars up top. They're the most expensive as well, too. And as I was told, they're actually not even the originals, so I don't know for the price that it's going to cost to salvage them, if they should even be salvaged, because when they repaired the school before, now those four pillars that are up top aren't even the originals. And if they take them down, they could crumble, so we could possibly have nothing. So, to spend that money, I don't know, I guess that's a toss-up, but that's what's on the table right now. Right now, and I guess it's not final, but those are the decisions and the, you know, recommendations that were made. The final decision lies with the superintendent and the mayor, so we're just a committee. We are giving our advice, but in terms of the community, I believe if the school has to come down, we should save something. The archway as well, when you walk into the school, that was proposed to be saved and put in the park. So, you know, the bigger things that we could save, I think were, you know, beneficial, I think we could save. The basketball floor, things like that would be saved, you know, the different lights that hang around now, the chandeliers, those would be saved as well, put into the new walkway coming into the school. So, you know, just trying to save as much and preserve as much of this school and the culture as possible, I think is very important. So, that's my goal for sitting on the committee. I think it's going pretty well as of right now. Nothing's been final, but like I said, we're just advising, but at the end of the day, everybody else is welcome. The meetings are not closed, as I was told. So, if anybody from the community wants to attend our committee meetings, they're more than welcome. They're not closed. We are not the only voice for the community, so it's not just a Rashawn thing or whoever else sits on the committee. Ms. Brown is the head of the committee, but everybody is welcome. I encourage people to come out and have your voice heard. Don't sit on the sidelines and complain. Come out, be active, get involved, make your voice heard. Other than that, I think I pretty much hit everything. Once again, the new swing space for the children at Camden High will be Big Picture Learning Academy for the ninth through 12th grade students. The sixth through eighth grade students for Big Picture Learning Academy will be transferred to the Annex, and all the children that are currently in Cats will be transferred as well for the Big Picture Learning Academy students. I think that's it. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hornsby, for providing those updates. And just to kind of restate the temporary space plan, so Camden High currently, all the rising ninth through 12th graders will be in the Hatch Main Building next year, and they will have that space to themselves. Big Picture, which is in Hatch today, will move to the Boys and Girls Club. Some people just call it the Cats Academy Charter School. It's originally Boys and Girls Club. And those students will move into a different campus within the Camden Academy Charter Network, which I believe is the Rosedale Campus in East Camden. And so, the middle school students at Big Picture will remain where they are in the Annex of Hatch. So, each of those schools will have their own autonomous space. And really, this took a long time to iron out the details, and obviously, we've gone through a couple of different proposals, and the prior versions of which we ultimately amended, given the feedback that we heard and the concerns that were cited by committee members, by parents, by students, and other committee members and community members. And so, grateful that we're in this position that I think is a win-win across the board for all schools. And I do want to recognize Cats Academy Charter School and the Camden Charter Network. They don't have to do this. They don't have to move out of this school, this building. They own the building. They're sacrificing because they believe it's in the best interest of the Parkside community. And so, we asked if they ever want to join us in a future board meeting to be recognized for this, and, you know, we'll wait to hear back from them. We've certainly thanked them, but I just want everyone to know, I realize there are often serious debates that we have about the role of charters in this city. You know, in this instance, let's give thanks where thanks is due. Camden Academy absolutely did not have to move their students out. You can imagine it's a huge hardship for them, and they're doing it in the best interest of our students and families, and so really grateful to their organization. So, as far as the Chowhound presentation, if somebody just wants to text me what the, if we're able to present that, and then I can, I can just kind of improvise here in the middle of this presentation or at the end of this presentation, just text me the information. By the way, if you ever see me on my phone during a board meeting, I'm just getting instructions on what to do as far as the presentation goes, right? So, just to jump into the presentation, we've done Chowhounds, and thank you again to Mr. Hornsby for the Camden High School update. The rest of the presentation is pretty brief. I just want to share some important updates and district highlights. So, the first is our summer job program, which we have colloquially called SWAG, Students Working to Access Greatness. And so, those applications are now live inside of every one of our schools. Our operations managers inside of our schools are taking the lead here. I'm sure other staff in the school buildings are also aware, namely, the family and operations coordinators. Each school, and this is a little bit of a change in the past, each school, we are asking to hire two to three students to support in different projects happening over the course of the summer. And so, the process this year will actually yield more student internships than in the past, which is fantastic, to get more kids into these working opportunities and to put money in their pocket. Applications are due by May the 26th and are available at school sites. Certainly, folks in our Central Office will be able to answer questions as well, but the applications are at the school level, and they're due by May the 26th. Want to give a quick shout-out, since we are in HB Wilson, to Ms. Showell. I don't believe she's in the audience today. Ms. Showell, picture here with Lisa Hardwick from the CEA. Her son, so she's a teacher here, her son was recently drafted by the Houston Texans in the fourth round of the NFL draft, and it is not solely to recognize, let's give him a round of applause. And it is not solely to recognize his athletic accomplishments. Her son, whose name is Julian Davenport, he's a double major and a minor in German, and speaks both German and Italian, and he's a remarkable student. He's visited the school before. He's a role model to the kids at HB, and just a huge shout-out to Ms. Showell. Want to also shout out the Cream School. So, these are pictures from a program called I'm the Difference, and that program is led by a local police officer, Officer Torres, and a teacher there, Mr. Bell. And this program allows young men to develop their social skills through mentorship and exposure to positive role models. So, thanks to our partnership with those individuals and teachers within the school building, they've been able to lead this mentorship program, and we just wanted to brag about it here. On a very similar note, our bilingual parent advisory council recently, and so they meet monthly, and they recently met with Camden County Police Department Detective Melva Garcia, who spoke to those parents, and this is driven by feedback we've heard from our families on BPAC, talking about concerns they have about child safety, and this includes really important, sensitive topics such as human trafficking, gang awareness, social media concerns, and child abuse. And so, grateful to Detective Garcia and to BPAC for having this very important, serious conversation. Just a few pictures from the Penn Relays. I'm not sure if anyone here has ever attended the Penn Relays and to see our students. I wasn't able to make it this year. I went the last couple of years. It's an awesome event, and each and every year, it's kind of amazing to see Camden participating in what is really an international track meet. Big shout-out to Creative Arts. So, this picture is them receiving an award. So, the vocal department directors, so led by Benita Farmer and Freddie Pratt. The students there won gold in five categories in a competition in New Orleans, and the five categories are show choir, jazz, concert choir, madrigals, and women's choir. So, let's give them a shout-out. Round of applause. Sticking with Creative Arts, some of you may have heard that they will be traveling to the Netherlands, where they are the only U.S. jazz band competing in an international competition of 15 finalists, and this is the World International Big Band Competition. This is basically the most prestigious international jazz competition there is. And again, Creative Arts is the only finalist from the United States of America in this There are many, there are countless people to thank in terms of getting this trip off the ground, as you can imagine with the logistics and the fundraising, the district support. So, everyone who played a role in getting this trip off the ground, huge thanks, and of course, incredible performance by our students to even get to this point, and we look forward to keeping you updated once they come back. That event, by the way... I wasn't able to make it this year, I went the last couple of years. It's an awesome event, and each and every year, it's kind of amazing to see Camden participating in what is really an international track meet. Big shout-out to Creative Arts. So this picture is them receiving an award, so the vocal department directors, so led by Benita Farmer and Freddie Pratt. The students there won gold in five categories in a competition in New Orleans. And the five categories are show choir, jazz, concert choir, madrigals, and women's choir. So let's give them a shout-out. Round of applause. Sticking with Creative Arts, some of you may have heard that they will be traveling to the Netherlands, where they are the only U.S. jazz band competing in an international competition of 15 finalists. And this is the World International Big Band Competition. This is basically the most prestigious international jazz competition there is. And again, Creative Arts is the only finalist from the United States of America in this There are many, there are countless people to thank in terms of getting this trip off the ground, as you can imagine with the logistics and the fundraising, the district support. So everyone who played a role in getting this trip off the ground, huge thanks, and of course, incredible performance by our students to even get to this point. And we look forward to keeping you updated once they come back. That event, by the way, is going to be on June the 10th. I'm not sure if it's going to be on TV, but if it is, we'll let you know. All right, lastly here, before we recognize the retirement list up on stage, not sure if anyone heard about this very, very unique event we had at Vet School in partnership with Lockheed Martin. So Lockheed Martin created, within a large vehicle, I assume it was originally a bus, conditions inside which resemble the planet Mars. And so it was basically a science-focused experience for our kids to better understand what life on Mars could be like, as there are many entrepreneurs and companies that are thinking about traveling to Mars and potentially building a second world on Mars, which is like pretty crazy, far-reaching thoughts and ideas that are out there. And Lockheed Martin is, of course, as a large company, part of those discussions. So just wanted to let folks know about that, I thought it was really interesting, and I know our students really appreciated the opportunity to learn more about Mars. That concludes the Superintendent's presentation, and we will acknowledge the one retirement up on stage.
At this time, we'll have Minister Wassim to acknowledge our retiree.
Yes, on behalf of the Camden Advisory Board of Education and Superintendent Payman Rohaneford, we would like to congratulate for service Ms. Morgane Combe. Ms. Morgane Combe, 26 years. We definitely thank her. I'm sorry, I do apologize, her name is more beautiful than gold, Morgana Combe. And we thank her for her years of, 26 years of service. And on behalf of the Camden Advisory Board of Education, that we say we wish her well in her next term, her endeavors. And we, especially myself, as a former educator myself, we definitely appreciate the years of service they have given. And I guess fortunately, or unfortunately, there's only one to name, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister Wassim. At this time, I would just like to allow Mr. Coles to make a few comments, because he has to leave.
Thank you again. Again, I want to thank the mayor for placing her trust in me to be a part of this board, this advisory board. And I believe that this board does have the best intentions at heart for the city of Camden. And I just hope that the community, that UN community, continue to work together to strive to give the kids the quality of education that they so well deserve. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to serve with all of you. I believe all of you have contributed a lot, and I hope that, again, that you continue to do so. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. At this time, the meeting will now be turned over to our interim. To our interim business administrator, thank you.
Good evening. At this time, I would request that Superintendent approve items number 30 to 48 of the agenda items, February and March Board Secretaries Report, the financial report, and also the bill list for this time period.
Any questions from the board?
Questions, comments?
Raise of hand?
Only comment for the report?
Ms. Morton?
Okay. Payman, your report tonight was exciting, starting with the SWAG. Always looking forward to that, and the kids, and being able to, the internship opportunities that we'll be offering to them, and giving them a little glimpse of our world and what we deal with. So thank you for, you know, having trust in them and believing in them that they are capable of performing these duties. The Camden High relocation is also another great news, especially as an alum from the school. The Charter Network system always has the greater community at heart, and it feels so good that 10 years later, that they still have that same mission and vision. And so I'm, you know, forever indebted and thankful to them for allowing the opportunity to come together for the sake of the community, and being able to keep the kids local, hassle-free, in a beautiful building that has resources. You know, there's a pool there, I mean, that's exciting for the community, and I think that the Parkside community is going to be able to take advantage of that, you know, rich resource there. And being able to, as a district, be able to provide programming, things of that sort, is going to be, you know, critical in the success of the neighborhood, so.
You know, on that note, we're actually working right now to get one of the teachers at Big Picture certified to teach swimming. And so that's kind of the first step in that direction, to make sure that we can kind of open it up as a real option for our kids.
Awesome. That's great. There are so many good things. Creative Arts, they are always exciting, and I think, you know, there's so much, so many calls that go back and forth throughout the week, throughout the month, and meetings, and fundraising, and we have to get them, and we got to get busing, and passports, and, you know, chaperones are going, and the itinerary, and just the fear of them going abroad, knowing that, you know, nationally, there's so many, you know, things going on with abroad policies and things of that sort. So thank you for always supporting them and other schools as it relates to study abroad, and giving them the opportunity, and never flinching when a call is made from one of us to you, to, you know, support and to come together so that we can push these things through and make it happen. So thank you. I know that sometimes, and, you know, as years, you know, keep passing by, it'll get difficult with budgeting and things of that sort, to continue to further support these things. But I think that this is a great opportunity for the community to also come together, to start fundraising for these types of activities for the near future, so that way, there is a fund balance for these schools, to be able to, you know, continue these types of activities and exposure. You know, so I'm very excited for them. I go to Creative Arts on the weekends, because my daughter, you know, goes to the music program there, and it was exciting to see Ms. Benita Farmer, you know, showcase the awards, they're very excited, and so I'm excited for them. So thank you Creative Arts for always giving us great news. And the vets' mission to Mars. I looked over to Ms. Blackshear, she was taken back, like, what, Mars? Yes, Ms. Blackshear, our kids are studying on what they're going to do when they go to Mars. So that is also exciting. I don't think six years ago, we, you know, would have, you know, gotten news like this. And so to see this today is very, you know, enlightening and something fresh and new. So, you know, again, thank you for, you know, the tremendous work that you've been doing throughout the district, and supporting our schools. I think all of us, we see like the light at the end of the tunnel. And the Chow Hound Group, thank you guys also for coming tonight. I went to one of, I think it was like the second one in the fall, my eight-year-old, to their event, and it was pretty awesome. And so I think it's important to continue supporting the Chow Hound Group and their school, and being able, because they do surgeries on the pets, and they're learning that, you know, firsthand from a vet. And so I think being able to bring the outside classroom experience inside the classroom is going to be really, you know, fulfilling to them and their academics for the near future. So thank you guys, keep up the great work, we're watching you on Facebook and in person and up on this stage, so let us know if you need anything. And lastly, sorry, I had like a lot, but the report was exciting. Lastly, I wanted to thank Superintendent Rohaneford for moving forward on the, there's a resolution affirming the commitment to educate all children as it relates to their immigration status. I think we can all come to a consensus that, you know, nationally, there's been a lot of confusion and fear and talk about immigration statuses for, you know, various different ethnicities. And so I've been seeing that districts throughout the nation have been following a similar approach, where they're forbidding ICE to come into school districts, to deport students that don't have citizenship. And so, you know, it is to my understanding that what this policy does is that, you know, it doesn't welcome ICE unless they have a warrant. So usually what they do is they come in without warrants, and then they're taking students that have no status, and in fact, that's really, you know, not constitutional. So what this policy does is it makes them have a warrant if they do want to, you know, take a young child. So I think this is awesome to be actually following a model that other school districts are following nationally. And so this is exciting for me, I think, because, you know, rarely do we follow, you know, national models. And so I think this is the right step in the, you know, direction, so thank you for that.
If you don't mind, I just, I would like to piggyback on that and just say a couple of words in Spanish for our parents on the other side. Para los padres que son indocumentados aquí en la ciudad de Camden, nosotros hemos puesto una resolución para que puedan proteger a los niños en la escuela. Para todos los padres que sean indocumentados y tengan su hijo, aquí en la escuela hay protección para ustedes. Nosotros tenemos una solución de poder traerle la información si en dado caso que algo le pasa a usted. Podemos tener esa información en la escuela para que así podemos contactar a un familiar, poder dejarle saber a alguien que de su confianza para que su hijo o su hija pueda tener un sitio seguro aquí en la escuela. So para los padres que puedan ver esta televisión por aquí, estamos con ustedes. Estamos siempre tratando de traer cosas que vayan a proteger a la comunidad hispana, especialmente ahora a todos los inmigrantes, los mexicanos, los dominicanos, todo lo que quiera decir inmigrante aquí en la ciudad de Camden. So para los padres, por favor, si necesitan cualquier información idiosinal, déjenos saber, pueden contactar al Superintendent, pueden contactar a la Vicepresidenta Felicia Reyes Morton, a mí, a Taisya Minera, Jose Brito Bueno, que somos los hispanos representando la comunidad aquí en la ciudad de Camden, y la educación de sus hijos. Gracias.
Hey, thank you. Thank you.
It's all good stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Morton, and Ms. Minear. Basically, as a board member, I would just like to say to Superintendent Rohaneford, thank you for the programs that we are allowing our students to be able to participate in. It's a long time coming, and it's good to see that it's beginning to get off the ground. I would love one day to see aviation as another part of the curriculum here. There are programs there around us, so our children, I believe, should have the opportunity to be a part of that as well, if that's what they choose to. So along with all the equity and the other programs that you have put in place throughout the district, that's making a difference. I want to say thank you for that, for our students.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Board President and Vice President. Any other questions, comments on the agenda? So in accordance with the powers vested in the state district superintendent under title 18A, I hereby approve today Superintendent's agenda items and business office agenda items. I believe we'll now turn it over to our student board reps. Okay. Is there any comments? Esmeralda?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Esmeralda Pena, I'm from Bremen Medical Arts. And something that I would like to bring to the meeting is something that we were able to do last week with my class, actually, in our school. We were able to host an event called Rev It Up, which was to, it was a health event to help improve, to promote more exercise, less sugar, and to get people to be active. And it was, it was a great event, and it was very successful, and it was student-led. It was something amazing, and I wanted to bring it to y'all's attention. And it was not a negative, because it just got fixed today, but our system was down as far as the clocks and the intercom, they were all. But today, the clocks are still not on, but the intercoms work now, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ibn Coleman. I represent Bremen Medical Arts as well. Something I would like to bring to this meeting is that for our senior class, well, my class next year, they will be introducing or bringing into our curriculum AP History and AP Forensics. And the guidance counselor at our school received the score reports from that college board, and it turns out that 18 of our juniors have over 1,000, have scored over 1,000. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Tiana King, and I represent Camden High School. And I really haven't been getting as many complaints as I usually do, except for one. And it was about the roundtable that we had not too long ago, a lot of people heard about it, and a lot of people were just confused why the whole school wasn't just taken into the auditorium and just, like, told like that, and they were just like a little frustrated. And, but it did like help out a little bit, like, people got more information from their peers. So I just want to thank you for, you know, having a roundtable and giving us more information about what's going on next year.
My name is Kyla Evans, I go to Camden High, and I represent the D Building. I don't really have any complaints either, it's the end of the year, so there's, nobody really cares too much about anything. I, me, I have a lot of things to look forward to. Saturday, I will be performing in front of City Hall. Next week is our prom, and then I have the gala after that, but most of all, I just want to graduate. I'm just looking for that, I just want to graduate, that's all.
All right, thank you all. And Tiana, we'll have a conversation about it next time, whether it makes sense to open it up to more students. Usually, it's like a logistical matter to kind of break up the school day, and it's just hard to do that, and the school leaders, the principals prefer that we do the smaller groups.
Payman, I'm taking, we don't put batteries in our clocks anymore?
It's complicated. So there was an overall intercom challenge, we had to order a new intercom and kind of resituate some equipment.
Okay.
All right, public comment?
All right, rules for public comment. The Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to be heard on the agenda items in this meeting. Each person who signed up to comment will have three minutes, and a alarm will sound when your three minutes are up. When that happens, we ask that you wrap up your comments. You cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please remain at the podium and address all of your comments to the board. Please conduct yourself in a respectful and courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. Also, if you curse, use vulgar language, or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or end your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes of comments. Members of the audience should also not interrupt the speaker at the podium. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during your three-minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the Superintendent or his designee will address your questions to the extent provided by law. Ms. Wilson, would you like to add?
Yes, I would just like to speak to our community audience today, and not only today, but going forward, as well as our board, because we are to be held accountable, as well as those of you who are coming to the mic. So I'm going to ask that we will conduct ourselves in a businesslike fashion, and remember that not only are we here seeing and hearing what we are saying and doing, but our students can see and hear, as well as the outside public outside of the city of Camden. Thank you.
Okay, first speaker, Sean Brown, after that is Larry Zahn.
One, two, three, thank you, okay. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to be a broken record today, and basically say the same thing I've been saying for the last four years, and to give you some examples and evidence of my major point. Although Ms. Wilson, Ms. Minear, Minister Mohammed may individually be... Although Ms., although Ms. Wilson, Ms. Minir, Minister Mohammed may individually be fine people and do their best in their minds as board members, the process that we continue to have is illegal. It's unethical. It's not at the best service of our students or the district. And I think that there is a lot of evidence to support that. So the first is, look, you know, what happened tonight is what happens typically, with a notable exception. This is a fairly thick superintendent's report. At least, usually, you have an hour of closed session to ask questions and go over any personnel matters. You didn't have, because of reorganization, you didn't have that today. So, so, which, so what we have in Camden is an unelected board and a superintendent who designed the report with his team, then approving the report, and then there's public comments. So I'm speaking after this report has already been passed. I wasn't at the last board meeting, but, but I watched it on, I watched it on YouTube. And one of the things that, one of the things that I noticed is something I noticed when I was a board member for three years, is that the decisions of where money is spent, what millions of dollars is going to go here or there, it can't be a decision that's just made by people on the seventh floor at the central office. And I'm not saying that I fully understand the process, because I don't and I'm sure it's changed, but it can't be. The public has to have its say, and public has to have its say before the big decisions are made. I was going through the report. I don't understand why with the, and I, and I think this is a great thing, this district has done a really good job. Pam and his team, with support of a lot of folks, including myself, have done a good job of moving from a suspension-based model of punishment to a restorative-based model of, of, of addressing student discipline issues, right? That's a, that's a good thing. So why do we still have, why are we still paying Camelot millions of dollars, which is in this report right here? Ms. Atwood, Ms. Blackshear, Ms., Ms. Burley, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Reyes Morton, for years have all agreed that we should have a robust, gifted and talented program so students, including my own son, and I'm sure hundreds of students throughout this district, can get an education that fits their intellectual needs. I didn't see that reflected in the budget. In this report tonight, we, the superintendent just approved to pay special police and police officers to be in our schools, which seems to be contrary to the idea of restorative justice model. It also seems to be, I remember when we went through this when I was on the board, that's when, it was 2012, where half, where half the police officers were laid off. So I could see why Ms. Simpson was chasing after to figure out, to suck up every dollar she can, to hire more police and have them in the, in the streets. Well, that's not our, that's not our situation right now. So, my, and, and so my final thought is a repetitive thought. There are some comments that were made tonight, but what we expect to hear as a public is for the superintendent and his team to be challenged by people in the community, but especially by people who have special access in the community, to get these reports ahead of time, to have relationships that a lot of us don't have, to make sure that we're doing our very best in the shrinking district to make sure those students are getting a good education and it's not based off of the, the opinions of a few, a few selected people from Trenton, but from what the community wants from the ground up.
Next speaker, Larry Zahn. After that is Surrender Carr. All right. Next speaker, Surrender Carr. After that is Dr. Keith Benson.
Good evening, Superintendent Rohanafard and the advisory board. Thank you. My name is Miss Surrender Carr. I'm an advocate and educator who works closely with ELLs at Woodrow Wilson High School. First off, I would like to correct myself from what I said last week. When I was advocating for the district to support content area teachers who want to learn another language, I misstated that the district currently picks up the expense for English. I meant to say chemistry and physics. Next, I would like to thank you all for openly supporting our undocumented students and families. This had me worried with current political climate in the state. It makes me proud to be a Camden educator now more than ever. Thank you for your commitment to our ELLs. Please consider looking for the proposed, looking at the proposed bilingual programming for the upcoming school year for Woodrow Wilson. That is much needed to strengthen the ESL and bilingual coursework so that ELLs can truly become bilingual global citizens. This program seeks to strengthen skills in English and Spanish and put the kids in appropriate environments to maximize skill acquisition. Currently, although sixty-seven percent of the Woodrow Wilson students are of Hispanic descent, eighteen percent of them are in the ESL bilingual program. Also, for some reason, this keeps moving, I understand that there will be a new school leadership team leading Woodrow Wilson for the upcoming school year. Please consider keeping the Diversity Survey Committee that works on culturally sensitive activities to bring the diverse staff and student population together. All staff and students at Woodrow Wilson are very fortunate to be surrounded by such diversity. We should celebrate all cultures, such as Hispanic, African-American, Asian, especially our school pride. Please consider infusing the mandatory GNC training themes into the monthly activities so that all staff, especially those that are new to the school, district, and the country are well-informed about topics such as discrimination, child abuse, anti-bullying, affirmative action, gang awareness, so they can do the right thing to protect and educate our students. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Dr. Keith Benson. After that is Sal Low Roman.
I don't think most of you guys are aware of this about me, is that usually my orientation is to, is really easygoing and it's relaxed and, and I prefer to be a type of person that just really just gets along with everybody. I rarely get into conflicts. But that really changes when I read things that the district says about our schools and when I sit in the audience, and I just see wrong done over and over and over again for the course of years. So let's, let's sort of unpack this. You started off the meeting appointing people with this, with this sort of event or circumstance should never happen. The mayor is operating outside of the law and we're all clapping that they're appointing people that should not be there. You guys are aware of it. But this is politics as usual. This is business as usual here. And when people come up here and point this out, we're the ones who are wrong. Minister with all due respect and all the other folks who were appointed, that should not have taken place tonight. Next thing, it kind of makes me wonder, what does it take to be on the Board of Education? Brother Cole, who left, I've never heard him speak before today. Brother, you on this side, I've never heard you say a word. What are, what does it take to sit right there? The mayor has to like you and you brought up, you brought up isms, racism, sexism, all that type of ism. You left off cronyism, and that's why you guys are sitting there. Next thing, so we talked to you out of compliance of the law and all sorts of stuff. The superintendent, the mayor's, and the governor's exploitation has really lasted for too long. Thank God the mayor's on her way out. Thank God the governor's on his way out, and now we have a superintendent here. But, and, and other things sort of come to mind here, like my, my thoughts are here aren't organized or written. I'm just sort of just drawing, you know, talking about some notes I have. Certification matters. Degrees in education matter. Because what it says is that you've done the requisite amount of coursework, you have the requisite amount of practice to deserve the spot you're filling in. My question is, what coursework, what education, what certification, what practice does a superintendent have who's laying off people who have the stuff? Tell me what I'm, tell me what I'm saying that is incorrect or shouldn't be said. We have folks back there with boiler licenses that went to school and got their certification to do the job that they're filling in right now, but the person who's making, who's signing off on them losing their jobs and healthcare, as Macho referenced, is someone without the certification to do his job. Secondly, I mean, lastly, Camden High was an overreach. The problem with greedy people is that they, enough is never enough. They keep wanting more and more and more. So it wasn't enough that the superintendent was closing schools, laying people off, like we've seen this scene for about four years straight. So they decided, you know what, that's not enough. We need Camden High, too. What you guys don't realize is the community has woken up in a way you guys might not be aware of. On Saturday, I was in a Communities United meeting with the NAACP, Communities United, Black Lives Matter, and the Alumni Association. Because Camden High must stay there. The superintendent himself said, once the school is torn down, he can't promise that it will be built. So what the hell are we talking about?
Sir, sir, please don't curse and your, your time is up.
Sorry, sorry about that. Listen, there's nothing wrong with addressing things we all know. Y'all shouldn't be there. The superintendent, he's a nice guy, doesn't have a certification, do his position. These folks should still have their jobs. This stuff has to end.
All right. Next speaker, Sal Low Roman.
Good evening, everybody. I was at the last meeting and I'm coming to this one for the same exact purpose about my job. It is important to me. I sit here and, at my school, just like Benson just said, I went to school for my license. The board didn't pay for mine. So I paid for my own. I did what I had to do, got my board of license. There's only two people in my building that are qualified to run a board. That's myself and that's Darrell Corley, which is my night person. When I'm at, when I'm not at work, my building shouldn't be open, because as we all know, it doesn't matter if security's there or not. If you do not have a board license operator, your building cannot be open. That is a state law. We all know that. So I never understand how Camden High is always open during the winter time when I go on vacation or something. So right there, we're violating the law. There is nobody that's going to replace me when you send them to Hatch, because of course the custodian there has to go with his school. So you're losing head custodians, myself, my man Peyton right there. It's like, y'all, really, to me, it feels like nobody actually cares about us. It doesn't. It really doesn't. Because if it did, you would think before you put your name on the paper. We all have families. I got four kids. Two of my, my daughters are out of school and are gone. My sons are still little, they're still in school. I have to support them. It'd be another way of me finding a job. Because of my license, it shouldn't be that hard, hopefully. But this is where I want to be. I love being here. Fifteen years in one place. I love this. I love my kids. I love Camden High. I've been there for eight years now. Four years, three years as a custodian, right now going on five years as head custodian. I love my place. The school has to, you got to do what you got to do when it comes to the school, but I need my job. It is important to me. I can't express that. If you got little kids, you understand how important it is for healthcare. You understand all this. If you don't have little kids and your kids are gone, then you really don't care. And that's how I feel when it comes and I hear people talk, especially from up here. It sounds like y'all just don't care, except for the president, because me and you have spoken before. But I'm tired of people not caring about us. We out here protesting, trying to save our jobs. It's not fair we have to do this every single year, every year. All we are asking for is for our contract that comes up, is to say we have the right to go in front of somebody to decide whether or not y'all wrong and we right. There it is. A neutral person, basically. Somebody who has no ties with us, with nobody. So I'm hoping that this does happen. I'm hoping that y'all see fit to put this in to help people who live in here. I live on South Thirty-third Street. I've been a Camden resident. I'm forty-one. I've been a Camden resident for, since I was thirteen, when I moved from New York to here. I love this place. I went to Morgan Village, Camden High. Been here, done that. I want to stay here. I want to stay in my school. I want to keep my job. So I'm hoping for the best. Thank you.
All right. Darnell Hardwick. After that is Derek Sweetenberg.
Good evening, Superintendent and board members. My name is Darnell Hardwick. This is the first time I came to an advisory board meeting. I'm the newly president of the Camden County NAACP. I've been in, I've been working in NAACP, working hard for eighteen years, and this year, Mr. Francis stepped down. He's the, he's now my first vice president.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm a Cam, a little history on me. I'm a Camden resident. I was a Camden resident. I went to school right here. I worked here during the summer, cleaning up the school when it was the old HB Wilson. I went to Morgan Village and then I graduated from Camden High School. And it's, it's a little weird, because my class was four hundred and twenty-one. I graduated number seven out of four hundred and twenty-one. And it's kind of weird when I hear that there's only five hundred students there. Is that correct? Yeah, it's, it's weird. But what I'm here today for is the, is to support, I'm also, I work for the Department of Transportation. I'm a resident engineer. I was in charge of painting the bridges all down here. When they painted the bridges on six seventy-six, I was the resident engineer on that project. I'm here, I'm also a shop steward for local ten thirty-two, CWA, local ten thirty-two. So I'm familiar with, with union issues. I'm here to support the union members at ten forty and for job security in their, in their contract. I went through DOT. I was like one of the only blacks working there, and they tried to fire me. And, and most of it was about job performance and performance evaluations. So that brings me up to, my, one of my family members was hit by this. He's my brother-in-law. His name is Anthony Peyton. Very dedicated employee. I think he has thirty-five years. And he's one of the most senior members. He is the senior, okay? And I just happened to look at, I said, Tony, you know, I know you're a good employee. Why, why were you fired? I mean, why are they not renewing you? And he said, well, I sent the letter in and they said it was based on my performance. So I said, Tony, the first thing I want to see is your performance evaluations. That was one of the first things that I looked at when they were trying to fire me. So I got a copy of his round one. Custodian strength in performance.
Sir, we ask that you not read anyone's performance evaluation for privacy reasons. If, if you'd like to address some board members after the meeting, you could, but in terms of the public meeting, please don't.
I just want to, I mean, for me, I just want to put it on the record, this performance evaluation doesn't make any sense of what they're saying about them. When you do a performance evaluation, there must be counseling. The other thing, he works for, he works at East Camden Middle School, which is now Mastery. So my question is, you know, who does his performance evaluations and who's responsible? I think there's ten custodians or people that were, were let go. How were they let go? Is it based on the scale that they have there and you took the least? Or was it recommended by a person? So that's my question. Do I have a couple of minutes? All right. One of the other things, Camden residents overwhelmingly vote for Democrats.
And sir, please, please wrap up your comments. Thank you.
This is, this will be the end. But unfortunately, union busting, right-to-work, and privatization initiatives of conservative values flourish. Camden continues to, to get, to ride tax breaks for outsiders while lowering the standard of living and protections for its current residents, like our predominantly minority educational security and maintenance workers. Something is seriously wrong with this picture. The privatization of education of Camden students and employees must end. Thank you. That's.
Thank you. Next speaker is Derek Sweetenberg, and after that is Nelson Penlas.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Derek Sweetenberg. I've been a district employee for twelve years. And I'm a union member. I've been, I've been working here for twelve years. And I just recently got called back to my job after, you know, doing everything that I had to do to try to be, becoming. becoming district employee. And, um, you know, all we've been trying to fight for is job security. Just job security. It's almost like fighting for civil rights, almost. I can't, after I've been here for twelve years, if I wanna decide to go now and get a mortgage, I don't even know if I have job security that I can pay for the mortgage after I get the mortgage. You know what I'm saying? No matter how long I've been here, no matter how many times I've been working overtime and, and trying to do my best for the district, I don't have any security that I can know that I can just work my job and do, do the best that I can and I can take care of my family. That's, that's a horrible feeling to have when you trying to do the best for your family. You don't even know if you wanna have a job next year. So when we outside protesting and fighting for, for, for just job security, we only out here protesting for job security. Why is it such a difficult task for the board members to acknowledge job security? When that's all we want. We wanna be able to make sure that we can support our families, especially if we grew up in, in the city of Camden. We went to the Camden City School District. We went to all the public schools. And we got families of our own. And we wanna do our own thing to make sure that we can live, you know, the good life, the white picket fence and, you know, the American dream. And it seems like it's getting torn away from us. No matter how hard you work, no matter how many hours you put in, nobody acknowledges how many hours you put in and how hard you work to do your job. They'll snatch it away from you in a heartbeat. People that's been working here for thirty-five years, they got pensions and all that, they getting that ripped, ripped from them. And it's, it's sad. And, you know, we got brothers here that, that been working here for twenty-plus years. And they, they on the cusp of retiring. And y'all snatching all that away from them, their ability to make a full pension and retire after they put all that time in. It's sad. You know what I mean? And it's something that we really gotta discuss. Because, you know, it's unfair to us, especially for those that came up in the city, that live in the city, that pay taxes in the city, that have children and grandchildren that go to the city schools. And y'all just taking it away from us? It's something that we really gotta consider, y'all. Please reconsider it. Please. That's all I gotta say.
All right. Next speaker is Nelson Penlas. After that is Kevin Barfield. Nelson. Next speaker, Kevin Barfield. After that is Mary Ellen Marino.
Good evening, everyone. And, um, congratulations, congratulations to the newly and reappointed board members. Again, as a parent, and it's kinda funny because it was like, listening to the students, um, talking was like, you know, really, nobody cares. It's like the end of the school year. I kinda, kinda related that to how my son is acting at home, the senior. But even with that being said, there's still some things that needs to be said in reference to another year of the same old, same old, the same old story. The concern for me as a parent is again, that as even as what you're saying as a shortfall, you're basically talking about projections. You're projecting in reference to what the shortfall is gonna be for next year's school budget. Because right now, the, the district is setting aside money for these new charter school and Renaissance school. That doesn't mean that these schools are gonna reach their population as far as their projected student enrollment. But in the meantime, you're cutting staff. And then here we go with this fourth year since you've been here, that we're gonna get to the next school year. You're gonna see again that we're understaffed in the school district. And then at the very last minute, you're scaring around trying to find people to fill in the holes, teachers in these classrooms. And then again, our students are gonna go through the same process of going through a whole year with not having teachers, qualified teachers in the classroom. One of the things that, that's been an impact on our students too, is the fact that they have to take these alternative testings. Because they're not even meeting the qualifications to, to actually graduate. So, so, and that's a, a direct impact on the school environment. It's been a whole, um, hostile environment for our teachers, for our students, for the parents and for the staff in this school district, including everyone in this audience. You know, and it, as a parent, it's really frustrating to again, come up with the fourth year and saying, okay, it's already, you can already see what's gonna happen. You can already can see what's gonna happen when we get to September. So, um, you know, again, when I, when I come to the board meetings, it's like my mind may think one thing. But then again, once I, I, I hear stories or, or what I'm feeling inside from being in the community and hearing people being pushed out, you know, it's really concerning. And, and just like tonight, when I'm listening to the code of ethics, making decisions in terms that, um, and the benefit of the welfare of our children, support, protect school persons and proper performance of their duties, that's y'all role. So when I look at these last two board meetings and I'm seeing that you're letting people go, and a lot of it is not based on, um, job performance. A lot of it's been based on, okay, setting up for failure. Because again, if you don't have the proper staffing in this, as we have been going through this for the last so many years, even with the custodians, there's no way impossible that you can have two people cleaning a whole building. And then you don't have the updated technology or equipment to even help them do that. We talking about security. But then the other part is in reference to the complaint about what was said earlier about civil rights. What I'm seeing and I'm hearing people being pushed out and by me, and this is no disrespect to the, um, to the bilingual or, um, other, um, ethnic groups or cultures. But the point is this, what is the ratio when you're talking about now you're, you're letting people go because they don't speak bilingual? You're looking to replace them and you replacing them with the quote bilingual. We still have a, about a fifty percent population of other ethnic groups in this. So when you're making decisions, I will hope that it's not based on, um, like we saying, discrimination in the student to pupil ratio.
Sir, please wrap up your comments.
Okay, and then the other part is that I want to ask the question was on Resolution Seventeen, um, in reference to the building program plan. I'd like more information on what that is. And again, when we talking about the board's taking the, um, the oath and upholding the Constitution of the United States, part of that is discrimination. Job discrimination, age discrimination, because a lot of individuals, like the people are saying, is at their end of retirement and then now you're letting them go. It's not based on job performance. And then the final part is this. And I'mma come back and I'mma have, I'mma have the research. I can imagine how much money you just giving this district has been giving away on programs. Millions of dollars that could be staffing because it's not being used in this district. And it's being changed constantly from year to year.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield.
So even if you was to cut back on the programs that you're not using through the superintendent's report, just giving away all these millions of dollars, and I can best believe, just like, and I'm gonna do some more research on a program that's been promoted that's being used in the district that people telling me is not even being used. And that's not the first time that's happening. On the paper, you giving million dollar documents, but the programs are still not being in this, in this district. And people are promoting it as being part of the curriculum. And I'm coming back with that information later.
Next speaker, Mary Ellen Marino. After that is Carol Gay. Mary Ellen Marino. Next speaker, Carol Gay. Carol Gay, no. Um, next speaker is Seth Hahn. After that is Rochelle Donkers.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Seth Hahn. I work for CWA. I work, uh, for the, the statewide union in Trenton. And so I can provide a bit of a, a statewide perspective on some of the things that are happening here. And I can say that when South Jersey wants something in Trenton, uh, they move heaven and earth. They'll hold the entire legislature. It doesn't matter if they're dealing with Republicans or Democrats. There's millions in tax breaks for corporations, project after project, it doesn't matter. There are creative ways to find millions of dollars for pet projects in this city and throughout South Jersey. And so that's how we know that if you say there's no money, it doesn't mean that there's no money. It means it's not a priority for the leadership of this city. And when you say that there's no money for public schools, it means that there's, the money is being moved to other schools. But we're here tonight and the workers here, the biggest issue in our contract negotiations isn't even money. Teachers in the district have job security. Administrators in the district have job security. Why shouldn't custodial maintenance staff have some level of job security as well? There's absolutely no reason there shouldn't be at least some level of job security and some process for the people who work in these schools day in and day out to have a tiny fraction of job security. The other thing I wanna talk about is, is looking at the statewide perspective. I've been in several cities recently and what we see is they say there's no money. So we need to privatize things. We sell public goods and then we lay workers off and the workers live in the town. And then we take that money and it's given to, to private companies elsewhere, not from the city. But it's not uniform throughout the state. We see it in Atlantic City. We see it in Camden. We see it in Newark. We see it in Trenton. We don't see it in Montclair. And we don't see it in Cherry Hill. We don't see it in Hunterdon County. We don't see it in the city that I live in. And so there's been a lot of talk tonight about doing what's right for the children in this community. And I would implore all of you to do the first thing in standing up to this racist agenda and showing the children in this community that you will do whatever you can to oppose it. And if you care about the kids in this community, you should do everything you can to make sure that their parents who live here and work here have a job. And you should do everything you can. If you care about kids having stability, make sure that the people who have homes and mortgages to pay know that if they do a good job and they're doing decent job, that they will have that job next year so they can continue to live in this community and pay their mortgage. Thank you.
Uh, next speaker, Rochelle Donkers. After that is Kevin Farrington.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Donkers and I do live in the city of Camden. And my main concern and my question is job security. We, a CWA ten forty of the maintenance staff and the custodial staff, we don't have job security. Every year, we go to work from September to May. And this is the time of year where we're all on pins and needles, wondering if we're gonna be renewed, wondering if we're gonna get rifled. I have four children, one's gonna go to college. I have a mortgage. I have a car payment. And I have, um, medical issues. And it scares me every May to wonder if I'm gonna be renewed for my job that I love. We have a job where every morning we come, I have a boiler license also. So every morning, I have to be in my building to open up the building during the winter seasons. Just like down at Front and Cooper, the building wasn't open because the head custodian was, uh, non-renewed. How would you guys get into the building? You wouldn't. If any of the custodians or head custodians with boiler license was non-renewed, the school would not be open during the boiler season. We need job security, like it was stated. We're not asking for money. Teachers get tenure. We want job security. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Kevin Farrington. After that is Anthony Peyton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been employed in the district for about twenty-five years. And it hurts my heart to see some of my coworkers who've been employed about the same amount of time and even longer getting our renewal notices. At the moment, our community's in trauma. We need help. We need job security. We need a way to keep our families in order, help everybody have the mortgages paid. The district's in trauma. We are dedicated employees. People come to work every day. And to come, to come in every May and say, oh, you're renewed, you're not renewed, you're not renewed, it hurts. It breaks up a family. It puts a family in poverty. It puts a family from the city of Camden in poverty. How can we build that? Job security. How can we help? Job security. You say you're one phone call away. This is our phone call right here. Thank you.
Uh, next speaker, Anthony Peyton. Then after that is Ray Lambboy.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Peyton. Lived in Camden all my life. Went to school system to Camden. Worked for the Board of Education for thirty-five years. Now, like you say, when like my neighbor in school, McGraw, when the head custodian don't come in, I'm running two buildings. So I'm just here to say, y'all don't realize I have a, a handicapped son, special needs son, who's scheduled to have open heart surgery once again, but I'm getting ready to lose my medical. So all I got to say is, I've been loyal. And thank you. All right?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next speaker, Ray Lambboy. After that is Michelle Ingram. Ray Lambboy. Uh, next speaker, Michelle Ingram. Then after that is Namibia L. Uh, next speaker is, uh, Namibia L.
Excuse me, um, before you speak, Namibia, I'm, I'm going to ask all of you who have come to, uh, the podium to speak, don't just come to the podium to speak, wait to hear the responses at the end, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Namibia L. I am a resident of Camden. I'm a parent of three girls who attend Camden City Public Schools. Um, one attends here HB, two at Creative Arts. I am also a former, um, Board of Education employee. I taught, uh, elementary and middle school here. I am here to speak to the humanity of the school board. I find it ironic that you adopt a code of ethics while simultaneously, uh, laying off employees who are necessary, who are committed, who are dedicated, many of them who are residents of Camden. I find it ironic that you adopt a code of ethics at the same time closing our schools. And I've came to this podium many times before, um, even when I was a board employee and spoke on behalf of my colleagues and spoke on behalf of the children. And it seems like it's fallen on deaf ears. So I'm here to speak to your humanity, for you to reconsider and to really think about what you're doing, what your actions, how they're affecting not only, uh, our, our young people, um, but our families, their families in the community. As school board members, either elected or appointed, your duty is to serve the community and to speak on behalf of the residents and speak on behalf of the community. You are not speaking for us. If we are here telling you we are in disagreement in your actions, you are not speaking for us. You were appointed here by, uh, the mayor and, and the state. And I just see that your allegiance is to them and not us. Many of you here are in alignment with, uh, North Cross's Camden County Democratic Committee. And your allegiance is to them. Your allegiance is not to the people. And it's sad. And I understand how you even sleep at night. Every year, we come in front of you and it's like, it doesn't even affect you. And you see, hear all, all the stories here. It's affecting people's families and their job security. You have people who are committed, who are dedicated. And every year, they have to come here and ask for their jobs and beg for their jobs. They're the first people that greet our students in the morning, that are here in the morning. And they're the last ones that leave the building. But you don't care. Because if you did, your actions would show other. So I'm asking you So, I'm asking you to reconsider your actions from this point forward, to truly adopt a code of ethics where your humanity is in order. Because right now, it's not. It's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last speaker is Robert Farmer.
Good evening, Board. I'm here, once again, you know, with a heavy heart, just looking out at this audience, and you know, it should be more here that has been affected, you know. So, I've just come here to say, look at our clerks. Many of our clerks that you're laying off are career members. They have been diligent workers. They have, you know, basically dedicated their life to the city of Camden. And just to be escorted out the door, especially by a test, once again, a lot of our African-American clerks cannot pass this test, this bilingual test, and I think that when it was done, it was done for that particular reason, so they will leave. If you rip them, they don't have no other way of actually keeping their employment. That's something that really bothers me. You're talking about our paraprofessionals that have been laid off. How are you laying off paraprofessionals when you need paraprofessionals? You're actually hiring paraprofessionals, but you're letting others go. You say for performance. You know, a lot of these members do not believe that. They believe a lot of it comes from backlash, because they spoke out or did other things. We have a situation right now over at H.B. Wilson where our paraprofessionals is being taken advantage of financially. And this goes on every year. I've been here four years, and for four years, I've been fighting H.B. Wilson to pay our paraprofessionals for their dedication, for their service to our children. It shouldn't be a fight. Shouldn't be a fight. We're talking about our custodians, they're our family out here. This is our family out here. They work well with the kids. Kids know them by first names. You know, they work well. As someone said, when you enter that door, our clerks and our custodians is the face of the schools. That's the first face that they see. That's the first face administrators see. So, there is a reason, there's a reason to reconsider hiring these workers. I do have one more thing to say, and it's about our non-renewed workers. I understand that the state says that you can re-non-renew them if they don't have tenure, but you're putting out teachers that are in particular areas where we need their services, science teachers, math teachers. We need these people, and these members have created a bond with these students, and then you're just ripping them away before they get their tenure. You know, it really hurts my heart. And there's one thing that really, really comes to mind when I look at this. What do they all have in common? All these rifts this year really have in common. They're residents of Camden. They're residents of Camden. You said you're here to help. You're creating poverty. You're creating unemployment. You know, I just don't see it. After four years of being president of the Camden Education Association, I just don't see where the help really is coming at. Because every year, we're looking at this. These are residents of Camden. If you can find money to provide services to the non-public schools, you can take some of that money and direct it back to these members. Take care of home first. Thank you.
So, that's the last speaker, and that ends public comment.
All right, just want to thank everybody who spoke this evening. Begin by addressing CWA and your advocacy. We are obviously in the middle of negotiating a new contract, so I can't comment on the specifics of those negotiations outside of the confines of the negotiations themselves. Our next meeting is scheduled on the 18th, so this week. What I will say is that we certainly appreciate your advocacy, and I do believe that our greatest opportunity to increase job opportunities for residents of Camden, for anyone who wants to serve in our custodial and facility staff, is to enhance the shared service agreements that we have. And so, I've mentioned this to Mr. Baylor, I've mentioned this to Mr. McAfee, and I think that within the negotiations themselves, I think there's wiggle room there to think about that as a real opportunity to preserve jobs and to work with schools in our city that are growing in terms of the number of students they're serving and the staff that they're hiring. And so, I'll leave it at that and look forward to continuing in those negotiations. As far as the, you know, the specific issue that you all have raised, as it relates to, the term you're using is job security. I think for those in the audience that may not be familiar with it, it's an arbitration process that they are advocating for. Again, we are going to take those conversations to the confidential negotiations themselves, because we don't want to comment on that legal matter publicly, but look forward to picking that up in person on the 18th. Some specific comments that were raised that I want to quickly respond to. So, Mr. Brown, you've raised gifted and talented. We've made a presentation. There is a high-level timeline that we are still meeting. And anyone who is interested in discussing gifted and talented in more detail, we'd be certainly happy to set up time with Ms. McCombs and Andrew Bell and the rest of our team. The police officers that you noted that are on the board report, they are being staffed or they are staffing our athletic events and board meetings. So, these are not police officers that we are paying and funding to be inside of our schools. So, he was making the point about moving away from punitive policies and suspending our kids. These are not paid police officers to be inside of our schools, but rather for various school events. Ms. Coward, just want to say thank you for your ongoing advocacy in support of our students, especially our most vulnerable students and the recommendations you made this evening. Look forward to continuing that conversation. To Mr. Hardwick and really anyone who advocated on behalf of someone who is impacted by our personnel notifications that went out last week or advocated on their own behalf. I just want to say, and I mentioned this last week, the appeals process is called the Donaldson hearing. I think most everyone here is aware of that. This board has taken that process very seriously, and it will be no different this year. We turned back a number of decisions last year because, you know, truth is truth, and where I believed and we believed, we needed to turn back a decision based on the facts we did. That's not to say that we're going to turn back every decision, but we are certainly going to be fair in that process and to hear out each and every person who wants to state their case. Mr. Barfield, really quickly, I think it warrants a longer conversation as far as the concerns you're noting in our board report. I just want to just quickly note, the vast, vast majority of our spending, over 80% goes to pay salaries and benefits. So, when you see these programs on the board report, keep that in mind, and also bear in mind that those funds for those programs are also paying salaries. They're also in support of our staff, whether it's a professional development opportunity or a stipend. All of that is to build their capacity to serve our kids. So, that's what you're seeing in the board report. That's it for me. I know our board president and potentially other board members would also like to make comments.
Is there anyone else that has something they want to say, board member?
I want to talk about the fact that people don't know what goes on behind closed doors. And last year, this whole board fought diligently to try to save the jobs of the CWA workers, and yet, people want to stand here and tell us, "We don't care and we don't do anything." That's not true. Ms. Donkers was there, and the president was there, Leroy, and they know how hard we fought to try to save those jobs last year. So, please don't come up here and say, "We don't do anything." We don't care.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Because, acknowledge, because we need to hear it. Ms. Aishmaner.
We try to, you know, come to a conclusion and make the best decision to keep the best candidate. So, you know, like Ms. Atwood said, don't think that we're not fighting. We do want Camden residents to have a job and stay at their job, but, you know, there's other things that comes with, but we do fight for you guys. We do.
Mr. Reyes-Martin.
Yeah, there were, I feel like, and these aren't just me, my personal views, not of the board, there were like two highlights today, job security. So, job security. So, Paimon's been here for about four years. We've been laying off for the past four years. But prior to those four years, I'd like to know when was the last time we laid off, which was a very long time. So, let's not pretend that schools aren't closing. Enrollment is not declining and shifting, and with that, we have to be fiscally responsible. So, if that means we've had, we had 25 schools and now we have 15, that means we need 15 head custodians that can open a building. And so, you know, and that is what you're seeing, is the effect of declining enrollment, budgetary, you know, declining as well. And that's not even to count with what's going on in legislature right now with the school funding formula, and if that goes through, the $50 million deficit that the district will incur. So, you know, every year, we had the Donaldson hearings, we're actively and participating in that, and so, we highly encourage you to go through that process so that way each individual case is being looked at and so that, you know, we can come together. But Paimon has a great point about the shared services agreement with the Renaissance Schools, and I don't know if charter schools aren't involved with that, but I know for sure Renaissance Schools, and I think that's a good, you know, open door to be able to save some jobs. But, you know, we do care about, you know, the jobs that are lost every year, just as much as the Camden residents that we have to lay off and the teachers that unfortunately we have to allow to continue to teach our children even after continuously felling them because of tenure laws. So, the second thing that's been, you know, bringing my attention is the whole idea of racism and how I'm not understanding, you know, the point of view of that, and you can call me naive, but for those of you who do not know, you know, I do have children that are half African-American. My husband is African-American, and we have a superintendent here who is Iranian. So, you know, at the very least, and my expecting or, I know for a fact that our Iranian superintendent is being racist in any kind of, you know, policy or procedural kind of way. So, you know, call me naive, but I just don't think those are the right arguments to try to move forward and come to a solution here. And so, you know, those are my two points on those two things.
Ms. Wassim.
Madam President, thank you. Madam Vice President, I have a question, Superintendent, because I'm not necessarily First of all, the gentleman who spoke, whose son, he said has special needs, your testimony was striking. I'm letting you know, we heard you, brother. Nevertheless, more than half of them were performance of some of the layoffs, correct?
Correct.
More than half, about that. I don't have the correct number right in front of me now, I'm not looking at it. So, therefore...
66 total, yeah.
So, therefore, some of those positions will be filled, because they're not, weren't just cutbacks, it was just performance. Am I understanding correctly? Is that true?
So, of the 66 positions, I don't have the number off the top of my head.
Yes, sir.
A number of them will be backfilled, so we will be hiring for. So, I think, for example, someone mentioned paraprofessionals earlier, I think it was President Farmer. Paraprofessionals, those positions, that's a high-needs staffing position. We still need to hire more paraprofessionals.
Correct.
It depends on the position. In certain other positions, someone who is non-renewed for performance reasons, maybe we would not backfill that position if we have a surplus of those positions. But we will be backfilling and rehiring for a number of them.
Correct. And I think that's very important, because some people can get the narrative incorrect and think they're just laying off and laying off. Because if you laid off for performance, and this where the Donaldson hearings come into play, whereas though, we'll get to hear specific things about the performance and all of those things that we can't discuss here, and we do what we do. And the only reason why we're responding back to it, that when you put things out in the atmosphere that people don't care, and I thank you, I appreciate your response, Ms. Atwood and everyone else, is that, you know, if I just turned the channel on or just watching, and I don't hear the board members respond to that, then you would think that they don't care. And so, therefore, we have to somewhat, I don't like to use the term braggadocious, so we have to talk about things that we do do. And to me, in leadership is always, how I run leadership is the fact that I try to let people see my work and let the work speak for itself, but if, you know, if you see the work that many of us do in this community consistently, and have consistently been doing in this community, you know, I just wanted to just point that out to the community about saying that you don't care, and when children, the high school students are here listening, and they're watching this, and they pick up and don't care. I think that if we, you know, you don't have to listen to me if you don't. Truth is truth, but I think if we can come up with a different word to say that about us, most of us live here in Camden. I think if we, with the Camden residents that's here, no, most, all of us live in here in Camden, if we are dealing with people who is unemployed, then I think where there's come to unemployment, crime rate goes up. So, we are very, very concerned. I think the word is say, we may not think that we concerned, but caring is something that we care about in our community, because many of us could have left this community 10 times over, but we're still here. And I'm just telling you, I can afford to stay anywhere in America, but I choose to stay here in Camden. And then, I believe, Madam Vice President, I think, maybe I'm not understanding correctly, I don't think someone was calling someone individually racist. I think the system is what we're talking about and not being personal, the systemic racism of the, you know, the government, the system, the education, and I believe that's what everyone is talking about. Because I have been a descendant of a slave and who discrimination, all types of discrimination that has affected Black people in America with that kind of thing happening to us for 400 years, we wouldn't allow anybody to be a subject of racism. We would stand up, and that's what Black people is all about. We stand up for anyone who's being discriminated against. That's what our past inherits us to do. So, and I'm not, you know, chiding you for that, because I think maybe I missed it, because if I heard racism, you can best believe I'll be the first, a racist person, you best believe that I'll be the first to stand up and try to, you know, defend that right. But I think what most people, even in the audience, is talking about a systemic racist system that has affected all of us. And when we say Black, we just not talking about African-American, we talking about Asian, we talking about American Indian, we talking about those in the Caribbean, we talking about, and this is why some of us don't use the term African-American, because Black people all over the planet. We just not in Africa. We everywhere. And I've been to Puerto Rico, I've been to other places, and I see people dark like me speaking Spanish, which is, by the way, not a native language of the people of the Caribbean. Okay? So, I just wanted to just, I just have to say that when people say things. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms., sorry. Ms. Burley, and then Mr. Brito.
First of all, I'd just like to say good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
And it's kind of heartbreaking to sit up here, meeting after meeting, and hear people say that we don't care.
Ms. Burley, the mic is not on.
We do care. And when I like to say, you can go through the Donaldson hearings, but let me give you some advice with that. When you come, come prepared. Go and do your homework. Get just information and everything you need together. Don't come, as I want to call it, half-stepping. Come prepared, because we're here to help you. If you don't come prepared, there's nothing we can do. We need your proof, your saying, you trying to tell us your side, and we want to hear your side. But be prepared when you come. Thank you.
Mr. Brito.
Yes, I would like to add to the comments of Minister Wassim regarding that we don't care. Ironically, that's the name of my company, We Care. As employers, really hard to lay off. As employers, really hard to lay off anybody. I mean, we take, uh, many considerations, and now while the board members are pressed the hardest to Superintendent when it comes to layoff or any budget-related matter. So, I mean, people don't really see the hours we put in and the sacrifice, the sacrifices that we make. We stay here and, uh, you think just, uh, one, three hours we stay here, uh, you don't realize, sometimes we have to travel and sometimes we have to go to the meetings, uh, and then talk to different authorities, which I did, because, because some issues I was against it. And, um, however, we have to follow what it is and the budget have to be in equilibrium. And, um, the budgets is, is, uh, is have to match enrollment. We base on enrollment, and the declining enrollment, we cannot continue in the path, in the path we're going. So if you want to ask to grow as a school district, well, you have to take the price, enroll to public schools. I mean, that's the base of our budget here. You know, enroll in public schools because now we're doing better, we have better performance. But if you don't, if you don't roll, we don't have enough money to hire many people. And, uh, like, we, uh, like we spoke to Mr., uh, the Superintendent, most of the people, they're going to be rehired, uh, if they, you know, pass the, the Donaldson hearing and then, and if we need it. But, you know, you have to, to think, this is a really hard decision. We have, at the end of the day, we have to pay the bills. We have to budget conscious. So that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Okay. Like you said last year, last week, last month, that we would be dealing with the Donaldson hearings. As my colleagues have said, when you come, make sure you bring your documentation, make sure you have your attorneys, or make sure you have your union representation with you when you come. We listen to what is given to us from the Superintendent. We then have the right to listen to all of you and then make a decision on what it's based off of. Superintendent listens to us and knows, most of the time, if we can come to a conclusion that we feel as though they have been put up, especially if they're saying it's on performance, that it's turned around. But we need you to help yourself. You can come to this mic, we need you to come to the mic, but then come set up a Donaldson hearing because we can't help you in any other way. The other way that we have to help you is that if for some reason you're not picked up in the position that you're in is non-renewed, there are other positions in the district that professional development can be set up for you to help you. There's paperwork that you need to see someone from the administration who's sitting behind us. They can help you with that. They will give you the documentation, tell you what the positions are, so you know how to go about filling out the information so it's correct, let you know what the position is, and then help to teach you what needs to be done to get that position. So the door is still open for you in those areas as well. As far as personnel, before it comes from the Personnel Committee to the Superintendent to come to this table, there are three of us that sit at the Personnel Committee. We ask the questions, we scrutinize, we ask for the background information, we ask for what their qualifications are. The other thing that you've got to remember, we have a Superintendent, but we have a CEO? CEO?
COO.
COO. And she's from the state. So no matter what comes before the Superintendent, the state is already aware of what's happening. So understand that. The state is not out of this, they are in the middle of it. So the question for the board members is to make sure that we ask the right questions so that we can help you if you have a leg to stand on. The other thing that I want to point out, the fact is, it said, "What qualifications do we have to sit here?" We take classes. I can speak for myself. Not only am I a board member, a certified board member, I'm a master board member, and I've taken every class that there is to make, to get the leadership at the highest level that New Jersey School Board has. And I still take classes. I represent us not only on New Jersey's level, at New Jersey School Boards, but on the national school boards level out of Washington, as well as Council of Urban Boards. So with that, the things that we see changing in this district and things are going on on a national level, some of those things are changing because we're bringing that information back, because we don't want our children and our staff members to be left in a position that you should be having the same rights as everyone else on a national level. Now with that, I'm going to say this as well. There is a reason why there is a concern with people sitting in this audience and those who aren't coming out today. Today is not the first time that you're hearing anything in reference to a position that gives you what people feel as though there's an upper hand. If I don't have bilingual, then I can't teach the class. If I'm not bilingual, I'm not an effective clerk. That's what comes across. Because what's happened in the last two years, you're hearing more and more about bilingual, bilingual. What you used to hear and what we should be hearing is the fact that we should make sure that we have certified teachers in every classroom, that we should have teachers who are certified in the specialty subjects in the core content, subject matter for all students. Bilingual, English language learners, special needs, gifted and talented. All of those things are the rights of our children in this school district. There's money that comes in on a state level, there's money that comes in on a federal level. So what we need to make sure is that that funds that comes in here, that those children are getting the programs that they're entitled to. And so with that, that's our responsibility, not yours. As long as you do your job and you have what you need, whether it's your documentation to say that I've been to the doctors, I was out sick, you make sure you have your documentation. On our end, I'm not going to sit by and say, "We need more white teachers because we have white children in that classroom." I can say to you, a couple weeks ago, School to Career Day was at Woodrow Wilson. My daughter, who works for Comcast, who's a senior accountant over there, she was asked to come and speak for Career Day. I was asked if I would come, I didn't go. I never said anything to, I knew the people who went and who was a part of it. She, not knowing, said to me, she was, she went to one of the classes because they went to different classes to speak to the different classes. She walked in one class and a group of students said, "We want some bilingual here." She said, "No problem, I do speak Spanish, but if you're more comfortable." Then she removed herself. But I can say to you, it's not the imagination, it's what's actually happening. And so I talked to the Superintendent two years ago in reference to how we deal with this, very gentle, because we don't want to have a situation where we should be coming together in unity where we're beginning to break because of. When Mr. Rivers, Mr. Waters came to that mic, the last board meeting, and spoke about the fact of, we had a principal at Woodrow Wilson High School who is African-American, and they feel as though he's being removed because he's not bilingual. Well, the principal there is bilingual, and he does have a bilingual vice principal or a lead, right? So therefore, that becomes a concern because we don't want it to come across, there's not just bilingual students there at Woodrow Wilson. There's Haitians, there's Asians, there's Creole, there's African-American, there's Dominican, there's Spanish. So we can't put a person in position because of the language they speak. We put in people who are qualified that has those qualifications for all students. Because if we just begin to do that in this district, we've got a real problem. And I don't ever want to see us go back to the days that we've had before where the city was sore up behind it. We're better than that, and we're not going to allow it to happen. This is going to be on behalf of all of our children, and we're going to look out for our staff as well. So we're asking you, when you come forward for your Donaldson hearing, remember sign up for it, so that we can hear your responses to what has been brought to us in reference to you. And I say to you that through our Personnel Committee, when the board members ask for that, we, I tell you, there's no hesitation on the information that's given to us. But we now need to hear why your name is on the list, we've heard why your name is there, we need you to tell us why you don't think you should be there, so that we can try to work on your behalf to keep you from being there. And it does really, really bother me that when I hear that there's an employee that's close to retirement, getting closer to their pension, that's being let go. That bothers me. It doesn't matter because it's humane. The humane society of the people who live in this city and anywhere who work in this city, your rights should be protected for what you have given us through all your years of service. So I thank you for all of you who've come out and how we've conducted this meeting this evening. Thank you all, and I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Have a good evening. I ask for someone to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the meeting made by Felicia Reyes Morton, seconded by Tayisha Manir. Roll call, Jose Brito Bueno, Dorothy Burley, Teresa Atwood, Catherine Blackshear, Tayisha Manir.
Yes.
Wassim Mohammed.
Yes.
Felicia Reyes Morton.
Yes.
And Martha Wilson.
Yes.
All right, the time is now 8:08 PM, and this meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.